Board of Education, August regular meeting to order. Could I get a roll call both please?
Melissa Clark, present. Rebecca Haynes.
Pardon.
Kimberly Smith-Polata, present. Hillary Stokowski, present. Jeff Zitokey.
Present.
Lisa Cabaluna is absent with notice. Diane Salter.
Here.
Dr. Carl Hydrick.
Here.
Jan Meek.
Here.
Carly Stone. And Diane Zidane.
Okay, thank you. And we all stand. I believe in.
I believe in the flag of the United States of America and in the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, verity and consciousness.
Okay, before we, as we start our meeting, we're going to flip two of the items. The superintendent's report should come first, and then we're going to have the public comments and questions on agenda business. So we're just gonna flip them because Dr. Hydrick's got lots to say, and it may answer some questions that people would have. But Dr. Hydrick, your superintendent's report.
Good evening and thank you. We'll first start off with, we're very pleased with the introduction of the hires we have. So we're gonna start with Diane Zidane and talk about special other counseling social work. She's on, is she online? We're gonna move to Dan Stevens.
Dan Stevens.
Where do you want me in this corner?
Yeah, I guess here.
I don't know the cameras. All of the office. But welcome everybody and excited to get the new school year going. We're very excited at the high school. We were able to hire three brand-new professionals staff this year. We actually have eleven people at the high school. Not brand-new, but some people that have moved around and stuff. So we're just excited to have all these amazing people. Our professionals staff, our assistant principal. We had 123 applicants for our assistant principal opening. So we had just amazing amount of talent to choose from into that position. It was actually over one. But there was one person that really rose to the top of the list as we went through the process. Megan, if you would just stand so everybody could see her. This is Megan Kozlowski. Megan was actually a teacher in Baltimore, Maryland, a teacher in Taylor, graduated from, has degrees both at Western and John Hopkins University, and most recently the principal over at Caseville High School. So please help me in welcoming Megan. Anything you want to hear from Megan?
Megan, where's kitchen that you?
It's like right there.
Okay. Hopefully we'll see you closer to the district, but welcome.
Thank you.
You'll love it here.
We're really excited. Another teacher that we have, Delaney, are you here? Stand up, Delaney. So this is Delaney Carr. I will tell you what, in my years, I think I've administered for 13 years, can I have yet, I shouldn't say yet, but I, when I call for references and talk to people about teachers and staff and all that, I will tell you that some of the most glowing reviews I've ever gotten was from Delaney's people that she had worked with in the past when I called. Delaney's gonna teach English for us at the high school, replacing Elise Rosenberg, who was with us as an English teacher. Delaney went to Oakland University, student taught at Oxford, and she did summer school for us as well. We got to see her in action in summer school. She's gonna do stuff. I can tell you that. Any questions for Delaney? And last, I think she's joining us online, Samantha Poplin. Is she up there?
Yeah. Hi.
Hello.
Hi Samantha.
Awesome. We were lucky enough this year at Brandon High School to get another counselor. In this town, with Samantha will overlook our line program, our at-risk students, as well as helping with the alleviate some of the case score of our other counselors. We've needed this position for years. I want to thank the board for giving us this position this year. What an asset she's going to be. Samantha went to Oakland University and most recently was a counselor in the Pontiac District. So help me in welcoming Samantha Poplin. Any questions for Samantha?
I'll just welcome aboard.
Awesome. Well, that's it for me.
Thank you. I'm Diane Zidane. I'm gonna introduce these new staff members that we have so far. We'll have more after the meeting. That's what we do. Rhonda Myers. You okay, Rhonda? Thank you. Rhonda is a new research new teacher that's gonna be at Brandon Middle School. She moved back to Michigan from Arizona, so welcome back home. She worked at early in Gilbert and Chandler, Arizona, for most, for 24 years in education. And she brings experience in all levels, middle schools, high school, and elementary. She attended Northern Arizona University for her BA and her master's degree. And she's working at a doctor right now.
Welcome.
Is, I'm listening. Melissa is our new social worker that will be housed at Brandon Middle School, and she comes with great experience from Havenwood Castle and residential therapy positions that she was in. She has a lot of great experiences outside of schools. She attended Syracuse University and University of California in Los Angeles. Welcome. So many people I interviewed. She is our new speech and language therapist, and she's assigned to our preschool program and Brandon Middle School. She interned at Lake Orion and at a neurological rehab center. And she attended MSU for a bachelor's and master's. Sarah Dato. Sarah is one of our new social work, elementary social workers, and she's gonna be assigned at Oakland. She is one of the two elementary social worker counselors that we were able to get through our 31N grant that you were recruiting. And she interned at practice in community schools and worked in community living services as a job coach. So she has experienced with different students and then attended MSU and OU.
All right.
I'm Melinda. Melinda is one of our new GSR preschool teachers, and she has experience with GSR being a private center in Lawrenceburg, which was there for five years. And she has training in our high school curriculum, which is a benefit to really have a trained person. And she attended Central Michigan University. I'm gonna do see Stacy Martin. Hi Stacy. Stacy is one of our new preschool academy teachers, and she comes to us with preschool experience in Rochester Hill and in Spring Valley, Illinois. And she attended Illinois State University.
And as you can see, we have a lot of little ones coming up through the system. They've been here. So welcome aboard, everybody. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Dennis Brower, the principal of the Spontan. And I'm super thankful I could be here to introduce Akiary, the newest kindergarten teacher joining our team at Spontan. And something super special about her is she recently was married and finished her interview in Hawaii. So thank goodness for Zoom and thank goodness for her flexibility. And she recently graduated from Michigan State, and I talked with her mentor teacher, and she could have gone on forever. It was a close conversation, but she said she was by far the best student teacher she's had in 25 years. So I feel so thankful. And welcome aboard.
I think that's it. Thank you very much.
I'm Carly Stone. I'd like to introduce Annie Muller. I'm the district elementary literacy leader. Super excited to have Annie. She comes to us with a tremendous amount of experience, not just from the classroom, but in the garden, definitely a great teacher, but also as a reading specialist in Pontiac for grade 8. And then recently left to Genesee ISD to come and hang out with us. And she went to as an early literacy coach for Genesee ISD, so feeling exceptionally fortunate. She is a Franco, a Western. She read with her master of U of U, so thank you for something.
Thank you. Moving on in the superintendent's report, just want to announce that we have settled on some dates for five question and answer period for the community parents. So the following dates, September 28, October 12, and October 26 will be five community forums. And those sessions will be virtually and in person. So virtually, we'll look at 9:00 AM, 5:00 PM each day, and 6:00 PM will be in person for all three of those. Get your questions answered. And that will be at the location of the context.
Thank you. Thank you for hosting those and getting so we could put information out. Anybody got any questions on, with Dr. Hydrick on that?
I just want to confirm, you said 9:28, 10:12, and 10:26?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I think it's time for the COVID update. So our back-to-school guidance that we're looking at for the 21-22 school year, a few weeks ago, sent out a memo to the parents about mask option. And so that's the decision we made back then. And then there are some bullet points that we still had to discuss at the district. So we have those bullet points finished, and I'm gonna share those with you. The plan is to share those tonight as with the board, and then to send out a letter to staff by Wednesday, and then to the parents by Thursday. So we are maintaining our position as masks optional. We believe that a choice is important. However, I want to clearly send out the MDHHS guidance and for the recommendation that's sent out by that organization, and so that parents can look at the information and decide whether they want to use a mask or not wear it. I think it's important to respect each other's opinions and personal choices and tolerances in the comfort level when making this family's decision. Busing. Masks are required on public transportation as a federal order. So we will have masks for riding our school buses this year. This order expires on September 13. So we'll wait and see if this order is continued or discontinued. So we might have a further communication to the public and parents later on that. Our buildings can handle three feet of distancing across our district, and I've talked with administration about that, about it, and the leadership team, so we can do that in our classrooms. Naturally, our desks are pretty much three feet, even a little bit greater than that anyways. So we're gonna have an expectation for staff and students to have distancing in the classroom where possible. As far as screening, testing, and vaccination status, that is not required. We certainly would encourage a family decision to have the vaccine, but there's no requirement for testing at this point in time. As far as monitoring of symptoms, we expect you to do the best you can as a family, use the best judgment that you can about being sick, to report absences as normal, and attendance as normal. We do ask that families have a plan to pick up their child if they are sick, and if you have signs and symptoms of COVID-19. If your child does test positive for COVID-19 and you find that information out, you find that information out, we appreciate if you contact the building administrations and let them know. And the Oakland County Health Department would be using their guidance for you to, if the quarantine is necessary. As far as contact tracing and isolation and quarantine, we will inform the families if there's a positive case within the elementary classroom. We did that last year. We also will inform the parents if there is a 612 case, but that would be per building, not classroom, because the students in 6 through 12 rotate classes. Finally, we have an obligation to maintain our dashboard, which would be the positive COVID cases and quarantines in each building like we did before, where parents can go on Brandon School District website, click on the left-hand side on the COVID report and find that spreadsheet. Our administrative team will work cooperatively with the Oakland County Health Department. They are expected to have issued guidance at the end of the week or the beginning of the following. They might be a little bit clearer on what the Oakland County Health Department expectations are, but we're gonna work cooperatively with them. And however, the original October 6 order discusses that it's their responsibility to contact families over quarantine and notification. For cleaning and disinfection, we are gonna continue to clean. If there is a outbreak or if there's a positive COVID case, we will certainly have additional cleaning where necessary. We have advantage on our ventilation system. We have high filtration filters of MIR 13 in them, and we expect we're safe as school bus windows can be open where practical. And as this, all rooms have an air purifier system, we have one in here, that we update the filters on there regularly. So the school day should have a more normal flow to it, and we don't see any restrictions for before or after school activities. And athletics is governed by the NHSAK, so that's something that we will look for guidance from Mr. Dyans and with athletics. So those are the bullet points that will be shared with the parents by Thursday. Some summary points here that where things can move a little sideways is this Oakland County Health Department guidance. I'm not sure what that looks like. I'm curious what that is, and we'll digest that information. This is important to look at our local conditions and data regularly and see what kind of, if there are positive COVID cases, if there's potential for outbreak. This could change what we do in our schools on a daily basis. And again, there's a possibility that you have a new state epidemic order or mandate in place, which we have to follow the school law and that. There's always that chance that the Health Department could have come up with some sort of mandate as well. So those are areas that we still have to look into, but we feel we have a solid start to school with these protocols.
Anybody got any questions for Dr. Hydrick?
No, you all explained.
Yeah, no, thank you. Well done. And like you say, Wednesday, we expect staff. Thursday, we'll help the parents. No, it looks good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have public comments and questions on agenda business. But before we start, I'm just going to read something about some of the rules, I guess you would say, that we're gonna put in place. When we get public comments and questions on agenda business, or at the citizens' input sections as a medium, for those who would like to speak, please type in or tell us your name, address, or group affiliation, if any. Those in person here, just sign in that information. There's a book right there by Mr. Warren and Shelby. For those virtual attendees, do so in the chat area and also raise your hand so you can be called on. To our community parents or those that are listening in, we recognize the value of public comments, the importance of expressing yourselves to us on district matters. Here are the guidelines for speaking. You must sign in. Please recognize yourself by stating your name, address, group affiliation, if any. Each statement will be limited to three minutes. The statements shall be directed at the board only. Generally, the board will not respond to public comments during the meeting. To ensure due process and respect of individual rights, the district maintains a formal process for handling complaints against individuals. A problem involving individuals or a specific incident is best handled through the administrative channels. Such matters should be reduced to writing and sent to Dr. Hydrick or the board president. Speakers are asked to express themselves in a simple manner with due respect for the dignity and the privacy of others who may be affected by your comments. While it is not our intent to stifle public comment, speakers should be aware that if your statements violate the rights of others, under the law of defamation or invasion of privacy, you may be held legally responsible. If you are unsure of the legal ramifications of what you're about to say, we do urge you to consult first with your legal advisor. Again, the board wants to hear what people want to say. We respect each speaker. We'll model for our students and others in the audience on how we can respectfully disagree with other views or voice and opinion or questions. I also want to say we would love to hear any give accolades and encouragement to our teachers, staff, and students that are making the learning progress and successes every day for every student. Okay, and I'm gonna start with in the room first, Maria. And again, this is on agenda business. So if you have a copy of the agenda, it's just one of these. If it's not on agenda business, it will be at the end of the meeting. Okay, Mr. Derek Warren, is that on agenda business? It is.
It is.
Okay, what's your agenda?
Harassment, that's part of it.
Okay. Come on up.
First, I want to say thanks to two awesome guys, two awesome principals, Mr. Tucker and Mr. Stevens. Thank y'all for continuing to be the best principals out there. My kids love y'all. They do.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
For the ones that don't know who I am.
Talk to us, Mr. Warren.
Oh, I'm sorry. All it's us.
You can introduce yourself, though.
I am Mr. Warren. Everybody know, but I'm a single father of four, been in this district from day one with my kids. Lot of stuff that's still being swept under the rug that needs to be addressed. And I'm glad to see everybody here, because every time I come to board meetings, meeting somebody else. But these are the documents that I got for three years that I've been fighting with this district with my kids. The people that know my kids, I have some of the best well-mannered kids ever. Yes, ma'am. No, ma'am. Yes, sir. My daughter got in trouble for saying yes, ma'am. That's ridiculous. There's an incident that just happened at the end of this school year, last school year. My son, 10 years old, he's been having issues with the district, the school, the sexual harassment now. When somebody's getting sexually harassed, don't you think you should have a meeting with that, whatever, then right then and there? Not wait a week later, we're gonna have a meeting a week later. No. That's harsh allegations. So y'all can get your story together? No, you can't do that. So long story short, come to find out, it wasn't true. I found out what the other parents were. The little girl cried to the parents to tell them to talk to the principal and let them know that they could still play together. To be told, well, we're just gonna keep them away from each other for right now. You can't keep doing that to these kids. He's in counseling right now. He's a therapist. Like I told you that before, my daughter does Oxford Virtual Academy now. Awesome. Awesome. She's doing good. But all this harassment, bullying, my daughter was caught racial slurs. I got two police reports. They didn't do nothing about it. There's kids out there that are killing themselves, and nobody's listening until it happens to their kid. That's when I feel that they're gonna do something. I wanted a parent that's gonna fight mine. I want a good education for my kids. I want a good education, and I'm not gonna stop. I just found out Michigan is the number one state with the worst special education system out of all 50 states, and I found that out from going to the rally, special education rally at the state capitol. Yes, me and my kids were there. We had a good time. The day before, they were starting kidnapping governor. We were there, but these kids are crying out for help. I took my son to the Murray Center. He's at a first grade reading level. He's going to the fifth grade. For me to be told, oh, he's good. He doesn't need a IEP. Took me three years to get my son on IEP, and I finally got him, because I'm not gonna give up. And when I did state complex against the district, well, we did this. I was a part of the first one. We was baffled. Why isn't your son on the IEP already? Like, your guess is good as mine. I shouldn't have to fight to get the help that my kids need. He didn't come into this world to ask for these problems that he's going through, to be grabbed up by teachers, armed contusion from it, to CPS being called on me to cover your tail for putting your hands on my son. And CPS told me if I'd agree with the complaint. I have a civil rights complaint investigation going on, and it shouldn't go that far. That show, y'all, there's something going on in this district that nobody's listening to. They're all sweeping it under the rug. But I'm just gonna let it be known. Y'all are dealing with the wrong parent. Fight for mine.
Thank you, Mr. Warren.
And not everybody's bad, but you got some good people there. The ones that are disrespecting these kids and false allegations, it's gonna come. They're gonna get theirs.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Warren. Next, I have, I have Renee from Groflin.
Yeah, she, well, she left.
Okay, does it, are you Jessica then?
I, yeah.
Okay, come on up, Jessica.
So, well, she.
Is she just walked out just moments ago?
No, she walked out to go find her teacher.
Okay.
We were going to discuss the mandates, if anything came up regarding that the other way, but I do want to say thank you to the board for making that decision to continue to allow it to be our choice. My kids have struggled with it, and I won't go into deep detail as we're gonna continue to leave it as a choice. I'm not gonna, like, overly go into it, but my kids have struggled with it. And I just am thankful for you guys for doing that. I do have a question regarding the continue to leave it as a choice. What will the, will the kids still be required to get a PCR test now that they've been recalled pre, like, a COVID screening to do sports?
I don't. No testing.
No testing. Thank you.
Next, I have Jessica. If she comes back, I could, and we're, once we get out of public comments.
She is, but she was just going to share if you guys were gonna require them to wear masks. She wanted to let you guys know.
She was gonna say similar to what you said, but especially she's gonna have more emphasis on the thank you.
Yeah, well, she was about to emphasize my life. Both of my children struggle very hard with masks for very, very different reasons. So I was going to tell that from my older daughter, which she didn't feel comfortable, and my younger daughter, which she's burned herself.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, I have David McTimberland Trail. Come on up, David.
I'm David McTide. I live at 3502 Road Trail. I have three kids in the elementary program with ours. She's helped us out a little bit already with masks, so hearing, that's really, that's really nice. So thank you very much. I appreciate it. Anyways, in regards to mask mandate and everything like that that's been involved with it, federally, the mandate, obviously, the busing and how that affects us, these are things that are a big concern with me, because last year, I recall that in October, when we were allowed to back to in-school learning, it was on a Friday, probably Monday, there was an outbreak of COVID at school. Then that following Wednesday, they went back to at-home learning. And I kinda wanna know what's gonna be the procedures now. Four people, everybody wants their kids to go back to school just to get the social interaction and that sort of thing. They miss it, they enjoy it, because they like to see their friends. But what is gonna be the procedures involved for if, since the federal government says, no, we're gonna institute those for buses and schools, how's that gonna change? And it seems a bit kind of ridiculous to me, because at times when you just don't look at the research board, you're looking at, if I told you that there were 100 deaths a day, and we'd go, geez, that's a pandemic. If I told you there were 1,100 deaths per day, you'd think, dang, that's 11 times worse. That's gotta be a bigger pandemic. Well, approximately right now, as you can see, the show in the state of Michigan, there's about 100 deaths per day from COVID or COVID-related illnesses. And there's almost 1,100 deaths per day from automobile accidents. And it seems to be interesting that we're looking to shut down the environment, the economy, stopping everybody, inhibiting people. And we're not talking about banning cars, we're not talking about banning alcohol, we're not talking about trying to raise the age limit for driving or anything like that. And it just seems And it just seems a bit, maybe we lose focus on things. And I know there's other things involved in it. It's all being on our control, but only the local level, county level. They have their own mandates, and we have the state level. I personally work for the federal government, and it's in a situation right now where today, they've just made it back that we are required to go back to wearing a mask. And I don't want to see us go back to a situation where I'm wearing two masks, a face guard, I'm still trying to walk around, I can't breathe, I want to go downstairs. It just seems to be ridiculous that we can't do a little bit better pre-planning for this. So realistically, what I want to know is, what are we going to do when, it's not a matter of if at this point in time, I feel it's a matter of when. I'm not one of those people that plans for everything to go right, always recording a plan. It doesn't work on an everyday basis. And I'd like to know, what is the Board's plan for when there is an outbreak of the Delta, the Echo, the Foxtrot, whatever variant form they want to come up with, that is going to cause us to shut down our schools and we go back to social distancing? I mean, that's my question.
And I need to know, Dr. Heidrich, if one of your sides sort of covered it regarding the health departments?
Yeah, so there is going to be some guidance from the county health department coming out. And we're also... So we got to be flexible with it. There's some guidance coming out next week. There might be some plans there with the county health department, what they say, that would affect us generally until those local conditions change like you're talking about. And we have to be flexible as a Board to look at every condition. And sometimes know what that is, you have to tell it, so we're going to continue to plan.
Is it going to be a situation where, like, my first grader or something like that, where their whole classroom is just going to be the same teacher remotely, online, or the virtual aspect? Is this something where we're going to have to look to maybe change and go into a Summit program, which is the other Learn From Home program that they had? I did both last year for my two kids. I did one for Summit halfway through the year, and the other two stayed with them classroom stuff. So I've seen both sides of it, and I think it has one opposed count to it. But is that going to be something that's going to be part of the plan? I think that's our...
Very possible, but we want to keep our schools open all year round. But there's possibility that can intermittent times move the challenge. And I can offer you a conversation too about the same time.
Well, in terms of the Learn From Home program, me personally, I kind of feel like it's a great, it's a great thing to be able to offer and maybe support it more than just using it as just a, it's an ugly stepchild from COVID or something. This might be something that could help people with special needs and that sort of thing, where they have certain, you know, sensitivities towards proximity to other people, that sort of thing, for especially these people who could actually still learn from home with the school environment. And you see it all the time on like ABC News, 2020, the robot, they have a TV set up, that sort of thing. Because this would be something where we could offer more, where we'd actually have more students in Brandon Township and from all the districts, like Pontiac School District, where they would want to actually get education here from Brandon school teacher, who they would actually live in, so on.
Very good ideas, Mr. McTide. I don't know if I'd say the name right, but if there's a follow-up too with an email or if there's a suggestion between now and Wednesday that maybe needed to be included to parents, but like, you know, you're giving some great suggestions, so thank you. Next, Andrea. Welcome, Andrea, how you doing?
My name is Andrea Nelker, and I'm here in the Brandon Education Association. And I just wanted to remind the school board that one of our main jobs as a school and as a school board, as a teacher, as administrators, is to make sure that our children are kept safe and happy and healthy. And I know this might not be a popular opinion at this meeting, but I wanted to remind everybody that at this time, the Delta variant is on an uptick. And the current CDC recommendations are that people should be wearing masks, but not in public. I have a statement here that I want to read, says, I'd like you to reconsider the mask optional because right now, there's an uptick in the Delta variant. The decision to have masks optional for K-12 is not safe for kids. We want to keep the kids as safe as possible and present in school. I taught online, I taught in person. I know the best place for these kids is in person. Last year, my kids wore masks in kindergarten. There were no issues with it. And a couple of kids here and there would have issues wearing masks. We gave them mask breaks, we took lots of breaks throughout the day. It was not an issue.
Aren't you wearing a mask? Please let her speak.
Thank you. I want to keep my children safe, physical and present in school. Please help us achieve this goal by adopting the masking policies recommended by the CDC, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, and the American Academy of Pediatrics. On August 13th, 2021, the NDHS updated its recommendations for safer school operations, and it states, because many students have yet to be vaccinated and students under the age of 12 are not eligible, layered prevention measures, including universal masking, must be put in place for consistent in-person learning to be maintained and to keep kids, staff, and families safe. The CDC and the AAP also recommend a universal masking mandate in school settings, especially when other layered prevention measures are not being met. One of these prevention measures is screening, which our district does not plan to include. Another is practicing social distancing, which is not always possible. The Delta variant has changed the risk level in our county. According to the CDC and the Oakland County Health Department, because Oakland County's level of community transmission is now high, all people regardless of vaccination status should be wearing masks in public indoor settings. Risk levels have changed from what they were earlier this summer, yet our mask policy hasn't changed to reflect that. We understand that it's difficult to create a mask mandate policy in schools when we don't yet have an official one in the local and state and national level. But the alternative is that we are essentially leaving the burden of that decision up to students to make throughout the course of the school. Please help us to ensure that our students have a safe and uninterrupted return to school that they deserve.
Okay, thank you, Andrea. Thank you for advocating. Appreciate it. Okay, I don't have anybody else for in-person.
I can wait, can I please speak?
Did you sign in?
I can sign in.
Here. I'll have you sign in. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Danielle Bardo. I spoke at the last school board meeting, and I would just like to say thank you to all of you. I emailed you guys a few times, and I appreciate the phone call from you, Superintendent. I do appreciate it. We just saw Genesee County mandated masks K through six, and I'm expecting that Oakland County is going to do the same. And I'm really hoping that each of you guys will reach out to Oakland County Health Department because us parents are not getting the responses. And you guys have a title next to your name. Please let them know that parents want to have an optional. Please let them know that you will lose students if you don't. I know that there is a risk. There's a risk in everything. These kids have a very, very low risk, though. There are also many options. He spoke of there being online options. If people are very scared, they are very welcome to keep their children on the hybrid or the home program. It's a great program. So if there's fears, we have options. But if there's a bigger number of people saying that they would prefer to just send their kids back with masks optional, I think that you should go with the majority here. I've heard from many, many parents that wish they could have been here tonight. Some of them are on this Zoom call. They do not want their children masked up whatsoever. Optional. Optional. I don't see much bullying from people who want the options. So that's not going to really be a thing. I don't think you'll see the kids who weren't wearing masks bullying very much. I think it could be the opposite. Just my opinion. But I really, really hope you guys will consider reaching out to the Oakland County Health Department because, like I said, you have a title. Superintendent means something, school board member means something. And we're asking you, we're begging you. Can you imagine these little kindergartners? I mean, some kids can do just fine, but some kids cannot. We have a very, very high percentage of kids who have sensitivities. They have sensory issues. This is not fair to mandate it. It is not fair. Please, reach out to Oakland County Health Department on behalf of your, on behalf of your community. I would really, really appreciate it if you did. Because like I said, I reach out almost every single day, and I even got something back today that says that K through 12 will be masked and teachers will be masked. And that is what they have put out to me. It was from 2020, but they sent it to me today. So please reach out to them, please let them know how you feel. I mean, or at least let us know, let them know how we feel because I don't know how all of you feel. I see some people maybe do like that, and some people maybe don't because I can see your face and you're smiling or not smiling. So please, just do your part for the community. We would really, really appreciate it. Optional, there's no harm, no foul in an option. You guys are not the parents. Each parent should have a choice. So please let the parent of the child decide what is right for their child. Thank you.
Thank you. We have the online people. Getting to you, those on online. Give us a moment. Anybody got their hands up?
Yes, I have one person I'll bring over to talk here.
Okay, just you, because I can't see anything. I mean, outside, I see...
Haley.
Haley?
Hello?
What's the last name?
Haley Weber.
Haley Weber, can you hear us? You may be on mute.
She is on mute on her end.
Haley?
She's asking her to unmute. I'm so sorry, I must have hit the raise hand button on accident.
That's okay, we can hear you now. Welcome. Go ahead and, we got public comments going.
I actually, I didn't have a comment, I was just listening in on my phone. But thank you guys so much for everything you're doing for us.
You're welcome.
Thank you, that's okay, thank you.
Thank you, Haley, appreciate it. Next, and I get it.
Next, I have Eric. Eric DeLorenzo.
Eric, can you hear us? You're up. Eric, you may be, again, I can't see that far as to whether you're on mute.
He's asking him to unmute, he's muted.
He's muted on his end.
Okay.
He needs to unmute.
I'm having flashbacks.
Eric, how we doing? Can you hear us or want to say something?
Eric, hello?
Eric, you got the floor if you want to speak. What do you think?
Yeah, he's on muted.
He's unmuted, so he's walked away possibly from the computer? Eric? Okay, we can bring him back at the end of the public comments, the second one we have coming up.
Okay.
Because we'll move on. Okay, next on our agenda, we have the approval of consent agendas. Thanks, Maria.
I just want to make sure I don't have anyone else. He's the only one who's waiting there.
And again, you can type in the chat and say, we'll just tell him, or if you can join in, or if you want to type a chat, I don't care. Yeah, that's good. Okay, next is going to be the approval of the consent agenda. Can I get a motion, please?
Move the Brandon Board of Education to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Okay, any discussion? Could I get a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Soke?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes. Next on our agendas are information and discussion items. First will be, if there's anybody got a Board of Education report that they want to. I don't have anything to report. Okay, next will be our finance report from our finance director, Jan.
I'm here. I just, I have a couple of action items tonight, I just wanted to briefly discuss those. The first are change orders to our Septic Field project. What happens is the Board approves a contract, and in that contract, we have a contingency. If we go over the contingency, which we did a little bit, then we go back to the Board to approve kind of an amended contract. So that's what, that's what the action items for tonight. It's to amend the contract to account for the change orders that went beyond the contingency amount. And both projects are done, looking good. Everything is working well.
And those are over at Harvey?
Harvey's sponsored, yes, yes. The Septic Field, actually, two and three, we did one, two, three years ago.
Okay.
So I just wanted to know what that was all about. And then the second one tonight, the Board is being asked to approve an authorizing resolution to transfer any operating surplus into our debt fund that we established three years ago. This will be the third time we're doing this. And what this is doing is it's giving us a little savings account for future payments. So once this federal money goes away, or there's some unintended, or some financial impacts that we weren't expecting, that we would have this money to make the Energy Five and the IP payment. So again, we've done this the past two years, and this would be the same as what we've done before.
Thank you, Jan. Any questions for Jan regarding any of those items? Okay, next we're going to our action items. Can I get a motion for the approval of the second reading of policy updates?
Move the Brandon Board of Education to approve the second reading of policy updates as presented.
Support.
Okay, any discussions on that?
I'll just thank the committee once again for all the policy.
Amazing.
Yeah, love them. Thank you. Okay, could I get a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Soke?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes. Could I get a motion for the approval of authorizing resolution for the transfer of the 2021 operating surplus?
Move the Brandon Board of Education to approve the authorizing resolution for the transfer of 2020 slash 21 operating surplus as presented.
Support.
Thank you. And any discussion on that? Jan just talked about it. Okay, could I get a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga? Yes. Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Soke?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes. Could I get a motion for the approval of the Brandon School District Emergency Operations Plan?
Move the Brandon Board of Education to approve the Brandon School District Emergency Operations Plan as presented.
Support.
Okay, discussion, Dr. Heidrich, you got it?
Well, I just want to thank Lieutenant Glover. Please, thanks for helping looking over that plan. Appreciate your help.
And Pence is our liaison, correct?
Yes.
And I think Lieutenant Glover is our substation commander. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, could I get a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Soke?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes. Could I get a motion for the approval of change order to the existing contract for Septic Tank 1 and 2?
Move the Brandon Board of Education to approve the change orders with our Earth Movers Incorporated as presented.
Support.
Okay, any discussion? Could I get a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Soke?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes. Could I get an approval for the human resources report?
Move the Brandon Board of Education to approve the human resources report as presented. Support.
Move the Brandon Board of Education to approve the human resource report as presented. Support.
Okay, and welcome to, if they're still here, all the new people. Any other discussion on that? Okay, could I get a roll call vote?
Jeff Soke?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Melissa Clark, yes. Diane Salter?
Yes. Could I get a motion for the approval of the admentum contract?
Move the Brandon Board of Education to approve the admentum contract as presented.
Look at a second.
Support.
Thank you. Dr. Heidrick, you want a brief comment on?
Yeah, we appreciate that. And the admentum contract will serve our Learn From Home program six through 12 as far as enrolling vendors to help courses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, could I get a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Diane, Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Ryan, Jeff Soke?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes.
Sorry.
Okay, next we do have citizens input. I know I took the signup. Is there anybody new signed up for addition? I don't see any names. Anybody online?
Eric never came back.
See if Eric or somebody else, you put your hand up if you wanna speak virtually. Is Eric back still up there?
Oh, we have one hand. Eric is still there.
Let me just go, let's click on him and just see.
He's still here.
Eric, you back? So if anybody knows Eric, tell them we tried more. Who wants to reach out to him? And he can contact Dr. Heidrick or the school board president, that's Lisa, if there's something of concern that he would like to express to us.
There are no other hand raised for comments?
Say one more time. I promise to be quick.
Come on up, Mr. Warren. Quick.
This is gonna be a new school year. All I'm asking, I'm asking nicely, but we're told, keep your hands off kids. Please, if my kids are acting out, contact their parent. I'm a strict parent. Don't believe they ask their parents about me. You don't wanna put your hands on kids because they don't deserve it. They act out just calling me and there ain't gonna be no high end sweep in other of us if they act out just calling me. No more calling Child Protective Services on me because all they're gonna do is tell me, file a grievance complaint, and that's what I'm gonna do. I'm not doing anything wrong. And my kids aren't. Kids are gonna act out, but you have to redirect them, especially the ones that have, that need the extra help, like the IEP students. They, that's what gets me is they're putting all this, the IEP students, the general, they can't do that. They're gonna learn different. My child is a first grade reading level. He should not be there. He should be in the fifth grade or at least four. Not no first grade.
Thank you, Mr. Warren.
Keep your hands off my son, my kids, and we gonna have a good school year. Go Blackhawk.
Go Blackhawk. Thank you. Okay, and next, can I get a motion to go into closed session for negotiation?
Move the Brandon Board of Education to approve to enter a closed session for negotiation. Support.
Okay, could I get a roll call vote, please?
Melissa Clark, yes. Rebecca Haines?
Yes.
Kimberly Smith Colaga?
Yes.
Hillary Stokowski?
Yes.
Jeff Soke?
Yes.
Diane Salter?
Yes. Okay, I got 22 after and I figured we'll just get a minute if anybody's got things. And we thank you for coming and appreciate it and hearing from people. Thank you.